Agenda meeting of July 5, 2022 to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 22, 2021, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 28, 2021, and the New York Star Ledger on December 27, 2021. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipony.net. Would our boy Scott come up and lead us in the flag salute? On the microphone. You gotta do something to earn your merit badge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Ms. Grignadi.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. DePiro.
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Fred Carr, Mayor James Barbario, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, Township Clerk Collin Madden, Council President, we have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, July 19, 2022 at 7:00 p.m., regular meeting, August 2, 2022 at 7:00 p.m., agenda meeting. Minutes for approval will be voted on at our regular meeting presentations and reports. Mayor?
Alls I have is we're having a Finance Committee meeting on Thursday, July 7, myself, the auditor, Fred Carr, the Business Administrator, Council Vice President Loretta Graniani, Councilman Frank Neglia, and our CFO, and to determine and get a certified budget to the council by next week.
Oh, good, okay.
Huh?
Is Valerie gonna be at that Finance meeting?
I know.
Mayor?
I'm good.
Is Valerie gonna be at that Finance meeting?
Yes, Valerie will be there.
Township Council, anyone? I have a couple of items, if no one else has any. The outside dining ordinance, I'm getting questions, restaurant owners asking questions about a dining ordinance, do we have an issue?
With what?
Outside dining.
No, we have an ordinance, you know.
There is no, their, outside dining is no longer allowed, it was allowed during COVID, they had made an exception, we have an outdoor seating ordinance, but that only allows three, three tables with basically 12, 12 chairs max.
All right, then the, then the request from the restaurants is that we have an ordinance, we allow them to have outside dining.
No, from what I understand, and Collin, correct me if I'm right or wrong, when the governor put an executive order out, outside dining was allowed due to COVID, but once COVID was, I guess not deemed an emergency anymore, then we follow our actual local ordinance again. We don't have an, I don't, from what I understand, we do not have an ordinance that allows for parking spots to be taken and for use for outside dining. Remember, they were using outside dining, they were using their parking spots, and when they get approved for, for whatever zoning they are, it's based on the parking, so, but that's from what I understand.
Some of the restaurants are asking us to pass an ordinance to allow them to have outside dining.
Can I just jump in here for a second? The, the reasoning for the outdoors, outdoor dining initially was because they couldn't use the restaurant, people could not go into a restaurant.
Everybody understands the issue.
But by doing that, you're now...
That's past history.
Yeah, but now you're giving them basically, you're, by doing that, you're gonna allow them to make essentially another restaurant in the parking lot, that's what they want, which doubles their occupancy, and that's the issue here, and not only that, but it's also a safety issue that we have by putting, you know, when, when you put tables in the parking spots, it becomes a safety issue as well.
Well, some of, some of them were actually taking up parking spots, some of them were Would the, would the administration and the council agree to have the planning board look at that option?
I, I have no issue with that.
If we pass an ordinance with restrictions, that makes sense.
Right.
Why not, if there's additional revenue restaurants can earn, why not?
No, absolutely, if it runs through the planning board, like you said, Council President, then they go through, dot all their i's and cross the t's.
Okay.
And absolutely.
Then I will, I will bring that issue to the planning board, thank you. Okay, I have a couple of other items. At the request of the Library Board, I had a meeting with, they requested me to meet with them, Melissa Kuzma, the Director, Library Director, Ellen Waldman, the President, and Herb Levine, the Board Member, and they're talking about the Lake Hiawatha Library, they have a, they have a serious dilemma now, because of the pandemic and the delays and the increased building costs, the $3 million they get as a grant and the $3 million we throw in is no longer sufficient. So, we sat down and talked about options, and we listed build on the present location, so you're not using a new site, new foundation, new underground and everything, that would save about a million dollars. Repair the old building, they have, I think it's four pages, typewritten pages of code violations and safety issues that would have to be repaired if they used the, tried to fix that used building again. So, I suggested that they find, they've come up with dollar amounts for the options. The current, with the, with the new increased costs to relocate, rebuild a library across the street, to repair the building, what would that cost if they took care of all the violations and the safety issues, what would that cost? And then make a presentation to the Township Council. So, I've scheduled them, their presentation for August 2, they will be at our meeting, and they will have a PowerPoint presentation with these options, and that gives them sufficient time to come up with the estimated costs for each one of those options, and then the council and the administration can decide, you know, what their best course of action is.
So then, if that's what they're looking to do now, and that, that's fine, that's not what they told me, but I'm glad you met with them. If they're looking to do that, then...
Do which?
The existent, the existent bond that we have out, would that cancel out?
Yes, it would.
Okay, that's what I figured, okay.
Yes, it would. So that, those are, that's, that comes into consideration during their presentations.
I just have one thing.
I have one more, two more things, actually. The ordinance for home occupations that Justin brought up, well, a homeowner was, wants to bake from her home, everybody remember that, that issue? Well, the proper procedure is, I'm gonna take that proposed ordinance, Justin, and give it to the planning board. The planning board would, would look at that and figure out what, what can be done, what should be done, and then they would come up with a, a recommendation for a zone change to the council, that's how that takes place, so I'll get that one started, too.
Can you explain that one to me, I didn't actually hear what you said, and that's not your fault.
There's a, there was a question from a lady that wants to bake from her home.
Oh, that's, okay, now I know what that is, all right. So basically, they can actually, well, that, that's the woman that came here?
Yes.
Okay, I gotta be honest, and that's good, we can look into it, but I would definitely check with the Health Department as well, as long, and, and planning and all that kind of stuff.
Well, let's, yeah, we'll start with the planning board.
Yeah.
And they would raise the questions with the Health Department, too. And also, the what ifs, you know, how far do you go with this?
Right.
And there's, there's a lot of, a lot of problems we can, if we don't perceive and do it right, it can cause more problems than it solves, so those both will go to the planning board for their consideration. Now, the other thing I had here was the budget questions from Justin, were those gonna be discussed tonight, or?
No, not tonight, we'll discuss them, we're gonna get together and discuss them in, in my office.
Okay.
And then, yeah.
You have a meeting set up for that?
I spoke to Justin on Saturday, we're gonna coordinate.
Okay. That's all I had.
I just wanted to take a minute to thank Frank Cahill and Parcipity Focus, there's an ad that's running for recruitment for our fire EMS and rescue recovery, and, you know, Frank's doing that for, for us for nothing, so I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill.
Okay, Township Attorney?
Nothing to report, Council President.
Thank you. Business Administrator?
Sir, we have nothing.
Township Clerk?
Nothing to report at this time, Council President, thank you.
Township Officers and Committees? And there is no correspondence. Bids taken, June 23, 2022, ambulance billing and collection services for EMS, no bids to be taken. So now I will entertain a motion to open to the public.
Seconded.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, and we seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
And Mr., Ms. Grignadi?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
And Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public, you have five minutes to speak on any matter. Bob, you get three minutes. I'm just kidding.
Okay, my name is Bob Venedzie, I live at 102 Brook Lawn Drive. At the June 14 council meeting, Dan Levin made a presentation describing a program that would subsidize Parcipony homeowners in R1 zoning districts to convert their detached garage or shed into an affordable housing unit. This program is uniquely bad, bad for the township and even bad for the affordable housing participant. The council must do everything in its power to see that this program is never implemented. The program makes a shambles out of Parcipony zoning laws, its occupancy laws and the master plan. By definition, an R1 property is only supposed to have one dwelling unit, and a, a single person may be able to live in a converted garage or a shed, but more than that would probably violate, start viol, start violating the township occupancy laws. Suspending or ignoring occupancy laws would deprive affordable housing occupants of the safety that they provide and would endanger our emergency service providers. And from the description of the program, it seems that once someone qualifies for and moves into one of these converted units, there is no monitoring to ensure compliance with township regulations whatsoever. A couple of council members indicated they would never consider participating in conversion, in a conversion program themselves, and doubt that many Parcipony property owners would either. However, such a program would be very attractive to individuals or large corporations such as REITs, whose business it is to make money by renting out properties. From their perspective, for the price of a single-family property, they can be subsidized, subsidized by the township's Affordable Housing Trust Fund to convert a garage or shed into a rentable unit and then collect tour rents on the property. If this conversion program is continued, who will wanna buy or even live next to an R1 property with a conversion unit, except for businesses that make money by renting them out? Furthermore, even from the standpoint of the affordable housing renter of this refurbished garage or shed, the conversion program is not very well thought out. Parcipony has been assessed with providing over 800 affordable housing apartment units, each of which rents for $3,000 a month or more on the open market. These units are more modern, more spacious, more luxurious, more convenient, have more parking and more amenities such as a pool and a gym than a refurbished garage or shed. So why would anyone wanna win a lottery to live in it, in a shed? Wouldn't they be better off living in one of these affordable housing luxury apartments? From any way you look at it, the garage and shed conversion program is deeply flawed and not worthy of the support of the council or the people of Parcipony. And at this point, I would really like to hear from each of you whether you support this program or not, and why.
Anyone wish to respond? This is part of our court decree that we agreed to, that the court imposed upon us. The limit is what, five units?
Ten. So, there's a, there's 10, five for moderate and five for moderate, one for low, five for low, five for moderate, there is a subsidy that's capped.
A total of 10 units.
10 units, and they have to pass, so, so Bob, just a short answer is before someone could, thank you for your statement, pass, you know, participate in the accessory apartment program, that apartment, that shed that you talk about or that garage has to pass all muster at building. You just can't pop a shed in the backyard and have somebody live into it, this is, you know, we're not a third world country, okay? They have to follow all those...
Well, it sure sounds like it's gonna be a third world...
I think you may have missed the presentation, but that's quite all right. So it is totally overwatched by the Township Code guys, they have to follow all the rules, there is a substantial effort that the individual has to go through to convert this, to participate in this program. It's mainly designed, if you have a duplex or something like that and you wanna move out, have people in the one side and you live in the other, as the Council President said, at the end of the day, we have a judge's order in requiring us to do that, if you have a better idea, I'm all for it. But we have a judge's order that requires us to do that and being in non-compliance...
This was part of...
This was part of the judge's order.
When we submitted our plan?
Yes, sir.
It had 800 something apartment units and then 10...
Yep, and it said that the...
Outhouses?
Yep, yes, didn't say outhouse, it says all participate and establish an accessory apartment program.
It gets scarier than, it gets scarier than that, too, Bob, because if someone's looking for extra income and they wanna do something like this in, in their, in their yard, their home, it's almost impossible to ever evict the people that move in there, and the evictions are almost impossible to, to make happen. So I don't think, I don't think any homeowner would wanna even risk...
A homeowner wouldn't, I agree with you, but people that are intent on renting, they're gonna make money on this. An individual that wants to rent, that, you know, buys properties to rent and, and a REIT, you know, a company that, that their business is to rent, we're gonna turn individually home-owned, R1 properties into rentals, and I wouldn't wanna own one, and I wouldn't wanna live next to one.
I agree.
So do what you can, enforce every law that you can, and do what politicians do, either deny, 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 or delay, 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 and this one, I want you to delay, 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 and then if you get reassessed in 2025, so be it, 'cause that's what the guy said, if you don't do it, you, you know, you'll get reassessed in, in the next round.
Well, all we have to do is a, a good faith effort, so as long as, as long as we have providing good faith effort and it gets delayed.
I, I think what I'm asking is you, you make it look like it's a good faith effort, but it's really not.
Understood.
Okay, I don't think anybody wants to say anything, I'm just writing it down on the record, but, you know, as you know, the problem is, it's a court order, so we have to make, we, listen, it may all be bad, you know, the Council on Affordable Housing it all rose from the Mount Laurel cases, and it's the Fair Housing Act, and unfortunately, Parcipony and no other town in New Jersey really has a choice, so you have to do it, and the danger is, if we don't do it, then you subject yourself to a builder's remedy if we don't comply with the court order, which is like, you think we have a lot of units now, see what happens when somebody comes in and says, hey, they didn't comply with the court order, and then you got like four times the units that you have now, so it's terrible, no doubt about it, but it's, there's nothing we can do other than comply with the order or suffer the consequences.
Yeah, it, it just doesn't make sense to me, wouldn't it be better to have 10 more affordable, these, these luxury apartments that these people can live in than a refurbished shed? And it, I don't understand the logic behind, you know, for the court.
Well, the whole thing's crazy, because everybody, these were individual lawsuits brought on the...
I agree with that.
Every municipality, so, again, and I don't disagree with you, not that it matters what I think, but unfortunately, that's the law of the state of New Jersey, is it...
Because, you know, it's 10 now, and it'll be 10 the next, you know, the next time, and the next time, and, you know, you're gonna make a mess out of our R1 individually-owned homes, so...
I have, I have a question, Mr. Carr or Mr. Lavery, once a tenant is established in the garage or a shed, whatever it may be, are they going to be looked at to make sure that their income has stayed the same? What if their income has improved? I know it was mentioned, what if they become millionaires? Okay, well, you're not gonna stay there, but what if they get part-time jobs and they're making a few dollars more and they're out of that low-income or moderate-income phase? What happens to those people? Are we checking, or is there an organization that will check to see what their income is so that they may stay at the locations that they're at?
No one checks. So, Councilwoman, I can, I can answer that, that's my, let me practice law, there is no income verification after initial being qualified for either the accessory high requirement or just your standard, you know, set aside for affordable housing. Once you qualify for affordable housing under COA in the state of New Jersey, you can stay there until you move out. Now, if the person does those things, as we talked about, whether they don't wanna pay rent, then that affordable housing person or any other renter goes through the landlord, renter eviction process like everybody else.
Which we know has been horribly taken care of these past several years.
Separate, separate conversation, but that's where they're at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha, I brought a copy of the ordinance being proposed against the leaf blowers, and there are reasons to oppose this, but they're frivolous and fabricated, and we could talk about that another time, so I'll give this to Collin, so, and then we can talk about it at a later date. At 6:14, Mr. Lavery said that the, the Resolution 202275 would be up for discussion, the one about the Lanadex Plaza and the stormwater, the one that was removed from the resolution to a resolution.
No, it's an ordinance, it's an ordinance, it's only for tonight.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's not.
Which one is this?
Where? It should be 2022075.
Yeah, that one we introduced, I believe, and I believe we actually, we actually adopted that one as well, Nick, yes, but that was...
When?
That was last meeting, I believe, I can get you a copy of it.
I was there, I, they said it would be up for discussion today, and I don't see it on the agenda here.
You weren't at the last meeting.
6:14, I was.
No, I'm talking about last meeting, so...
Oh, yeah, well, I couldn't, I, yeah.
But I'll get you a copy, and then we can just, and then you...
So it was, it was discussed?
It was, it was up for adoption, so we had a public hearing on it.
All right, and so the, the part I'm confused, then, I remember distinctly hearing that Mary Jude Wyler, the liaison for Highlands Council, had sent a letter, now I had a correspondence with her, and she says, "I am not aware of any le, any letter having been written," and then she said, "I am not aware of any discussion about stormwater on that property," which is the park at the Lanadex, so if she's, if she's not aware of, of any letter, and the Township Attorney says she had a letter, I'm confused, and then, true or false, is this property exempt from the Highlands' conformance? And, all right, so Mary Jude Wyler says she doesn't, so they need to, I would think, apply for an exemption and state the reasons why, so this...
I have an email right here from Mary Jude Haddock Wyler dated Thursday, March 31, 2022, addressed to me on this very issue, and there's more emails, too, so, you know...
I swear to God, she told me that she knows of no...
I'll give you copies of the emails.
Yeah, I would love it, 'cause I...
They sent me the ordinance, which I think is what I sent on June 14.
Uh, yeah.
The Highlands prepared it, and they revised the maps to go along with the ordinance, so I've got a number of emails, this isn't the only, I mean, you can take a look at it yourself.
All right, so, all right, okay, I believe you, but I wanna, I wanna see it for myself.
I'm good.
So this property is exempt from Highlands' conformance?
No.
So was the resolution or the ordinance to remove this property from Highlands' conformance?
What the ordinance did was changed the designation from prime groundwater to a municipally important groundwater recharge area, so they're still responsible for the recharge, it just changes that, because what happened was, they have a footprint, they have a, they have an approved, you know, site plan for a building...
Right.
But it's a corporate office building, so obviously that's not something that anybody's building right now, so they wanna build a memory care, nursing home type facility, and that has to be like one or two levels, so the footprint changes, instead of going up, it goes out a little bit, there was a line through the building, and that's basically what that ordinance does, is it changes the designation, they still have to comply.
Okay, 'cause I, yeah...
It's just how they treat, it's just how they treat the groundwater.
Yeah, 'cause it was confusing, I thought we were trying to skip the Highlands for this property, and when, when you said it was in the best interest of the residents, I'm saying, if we're skipping Highlands, how is it in the best interest? So, and Mary Jude confused me even further, I swear, I have a copy of emails from her, she says she never communicated with, so I don't know what...
No, not only do we communicate, and I'll give you copies of the emails, they drafted the ordinance, the revisions, and sent them to me, along with drafting the map changes, so I have them, and I'll be happy to give it to you.
I don't understand why she...
But it's, it's moving the line, so it's not exempting them from the Highlands, it's just moving that line, that's all, and they still have to deal with the groundwater recharge.
Yeah, because I'm saying, this town's 100% the planning board, why in God's name wouldn't they want the best planning possible, which Highlands gives us, so I was, I was, I apologize, but it's really not my fault, I've been given, I'm gonna have to contact Mary Jude Wyler and...
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds. All right, I want you to look at the leaf blower thing, and next time I come back, I'll discuss why any resistance to it is really frivolous and unfounded, so...
If I dismay, Council President, with regards to the leaf blower, basically what you're saying is you want us to tell the residents that they can't use any gas two-engine equipment?
No, I want you to support the state legislation to ban them, and then they have to convert to battery power. There, there are towns that, well, that banned them certain hours and everything, it's a very, it disturbs the peace, it pollutes the air, I can give you a lot of, a lot of, it's just bad for... just bad for, for, for everyone, and there is an alternative green technology that can replace it, and if, if the law goes, these landscapers will even be subsidized to change. But just think about the Clean Air Act, one hour of a leaf blower equals eight hours of an automobile, and 20 hours of a leaf blower is one year of auto emissions, that's not good for anyone. And you got to put, in Lake Hiawatha, you don't, you're never disturbed by leaf blowers?
No, because I use one that's gas.
And I bet you have your...
I mean, it doesn't bother me any...
I bet you have earphones on.
No, I don't, I don't, I'm deaf already, but...
There you go, okay, all right.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Floor's closed.
Okay, non-consent agenda.
Resolutions R2022-107, authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Edwards Road Improvement Project Phase Two. Motion to approve the resolution made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And approval of payroll and bills list?
CFO Juan Uribe recommends authorization for payment. One, authorization of the 7822 regular payroll, estimated at $1,850,000. Two, payment of bills from voucher list of 7122 through 7322, estimated totaling $2,412,949 and 10 cents. Motion to approve the authorization for payment above by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the ultimate motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
We're adjourned, have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
All right, have a good night.